At this time, I would ask you to join us in the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes.
Yeah. That's on.
Yep.
All right. Laurie, would you do the roll call, please?
Ms. Elan?
Present.
Councilmember Rainville?
Present.
Councilmember Bryan?
Here.
Councilmember Greenberg?
Here.
Councilmember Blake?
She is on an excused absence.
And we also have present, Mayor Stockman.
All right, and we do have agendas at the back of the room. We also have a sign up sheet if you'd like to speak at the open mic. We ask you to sign up in the back. And if you do want to speak at the open mic, we ask you to state your name and address for our records. And keep the conversation to three minutes, please. Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Bryan? If there are no objections, I'd make a motion to approve the next agenda.
Actually, I have a couple of things I'd like to readjust on the agenda. I'd like to pull out on the consent agenda, item D for discussion, the animal control. Item F, the engineer's report on soil borings. Oh, and the H, bonding for road improvements. I just have some clarification questions on that one. So if we can add those three to the council items.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville?
I would also like to pull item G, letter G.
All right. All right, so with those amendments to the agenda, I will accept your motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Bryan?
I would like to make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second?
Motion and second, any other discussion. Seeing and hearing that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed, motion carries. And so we are going to then start with the sheriff's report. Commander?
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to give you the report for January of 2020 from the sheriff's office. During the month, sheriff's deputies responded to 119 calls for service. I did review the calls for service and it looks like that category of unknown calls that we talked about last year, it looks like they were able to filter those out, so those shouldn't be a part of calls for service. I just wanted to let you know, I looked for that and I'll be keeping an eye on that to make sure that they don't appear to be falling back in there.
So just along that point, so we've got an additional sheet this month.
Correct.
It does appear that there are 14 of the unknown category.
And there is?
Is that different?
Yes, and that was a, there's still a category for unknown calls, but those, what I confirmed with our communications is that those unknown calls that you see come in and are generally like an unknown trouble type call that they get. And sometimes that's the initial classification that they get. So it's, sometimes it can be like a 911 hangup or an open line, and that's how they classify it to begin with. So those would still be accurate calls. There was a separate category before it was the issue that we're having, that they weren't a call for service, but they were still documenting them because it was a call that generated from now then that didn't come to law enforcement or fire. So, so those would still be accurate. And as far as each specific call, I, the way that system is set up, I can't break down what each of those individual calls is. But again, I'll monitor to make sure that those, if I see those climb back up, I would be concerned and make further inquiries to see. But having some unknown calls is, is normal.
There's also six of them that just say 911, isn't that?
And that can be, that can be any other type of 911 call that doesn't have a category, one of the ones that you would see underneath. So sometimes they, sometimes the calls are difficult to classify based on what people are saying. So the dispatchers on the fly sometimes have to just find the most appropriate category and then go with that. That's why you might see those.
One of the things we've talked about is at some point, it might be nice to get down to the dispatch, bring the council down there and just show them what, what goes on. I was able to do that with emergency management group one time. It'd be nice if, Mary has a pretty good idea since she used to do it, but the rest of us, it'd be nice to get down there and actually see.
And if there's a, if there's a point where the council would like, I can try to arrange some type of a meeting where we could go down there, so you could see what happens and, and do that. I could work on that if the council has interest in doing that.
I would like to see that.
Looks affirmative.
Okay, and would you prefer, I'm assuming you mean prefer an evening type thing, or what would work best for the council?
Well, Joel says evening, the rest of us say. If Joel's gonna be there, I guess it'd be evening.
Okay, so how about this, I will explore that with the supervisors down there and try to come up with some dates. And then, would you like me to just coordinate with Laurie, or email the entire council at once, or what would your preference be?
Laurie, you wanna? Okay. I was gonna say, just wanted to directly, if you wanna take that.
So I'll work with Laurie then.
Sorry for interrupting there.
Not at all. I think it's good for everybody to understand what happens there, so maybe if the council has questions, it might help clarify some of those, because I don't work on that end and don't have all of the answers.
Well, it's, it's pretty amazing, unit.
And I, at one point in my career, actually did dispatch, but that was before the enhanced 911. And that was in a rural setting where everything, when you spoke with people, you had to ask them where they were and there was no addressing. Everything where I worked was route and box number. So we used a lot of landmarks and the old Johnson Farm and the Smith Farm and things like that, so. But that was much, much, you know, that's almost 30 years ago now.
Well, when I went in there, they were doing some training and they had three reminders about this thing that they were working through. A lot to know.
Yes.
And not a big crowd, you would assume there's more people doing it than you see there.
Correct. You're exactly right. And well, just, I'll highlight a couple of calls for service for the month. On the 3rd of January, deputies responded to a medical in the city here, where it was reported that a female was unresponsive in a vehicle. And the, when the deputies arrived, a bystander was doing CPR on that individual. The deputies helped take over and she had a pulse, but the deputies ended up doing rescue breathing for the victim. During the investigation, it became known that the subject was a known heroin user. And when paramedics got there, they administered Narcan to the individual and she began to breathe normally. And so from a couple of minutes difference of being on the brink of not breathing or having a pulse on her own to breathing on her own was pretty amazing. And it just shows the power of, first of all, the power of the drugs that people can get their hands on these days where it can really do them harm, but then the, the power of having Narcan and things like that at our disposal to, to help people in need.
In a situation like that, is there one dosage of Narcan in a squad, or?
Yes, we have Narcan in our squads.
I just want, I mean it.
We generally have multiple, I mean, if need be. And then there's different parameters on how they would administer it. And, and all the parameters have to be met before they can administer it. And sometimes it takes a few minutes of asking questions and trying to dig through this before they actually can. So that's probably, we have, we have Narcan administered, I don't want to say frequently, but often enough where our staff are very familiar with it, have it and use it when they, when they can. So this time, by the time they got through all those questioning and doing all of that, the paramedics were there and were able to take care of that.
If someone wasn't responsive and you couldn't ask those questions, that keep you from administering Narcan, or?
Yeah, there, there would have to be some other indications. Generally, what we would look for is, or are drug paraphernalia that would be common with overdoses and stuff like that. And sometimes we, we can't find that, because what we find is sometimes friends or bystanders or family will clean things up. They might find a loved one who's experiencing this overdose and they'll go ahead and clean things up while we're on the way. And then, by the time we get there, there's no indication of that drug use. We just have an unresponsive person who isn't breathing or doesn't have a pulse. And then we find out later that there was drug use that may have been cleaned up by other people. So absent of other factors, just with a person down, they wouldn't likely administer Narcan because of that. There have to be some other indications of the drug use. So the female was ultimately transported to Mercy Hospital and was breathing on her own at the time. So, nice, nice way for that to end. And then just a, you know, we talk about some of the crashes and stuff that occur in the city. On the 19th, and there was, deputies responded to a report, a report of a personal injury crash on Now Then Boulevard near Parrot Street. Two vehicles crashed head on there. The initial investigation showed that there was a northbound vehicle and a southbound vehicle. And the southbound vehicle lost control on a patch of ice and crossed over and hit the northbound vehicle. While the deputies were investigating and talking with everybody involved, they believe they saw signs of impairment on the driver of that southbound vehicle that had caused the crash. They ultimately administered field sobriety tests, which the driver failed and, and he was arrested for driving under the influence. And later, his alcohol concentration was measured at .14. So, just one of those things, you know, people going on about their day and minding their own business and somebody who's out there driving impaired, you know, we're very fortunate that ultimately, nobody was actually injured and refused any medical treatment, but I think that's kind of a lucky, a lucky crash.
I, I was on that scene right after it happened. I can't believe anybody walked away from those two.
And, and to have nobody injured, because you and I spoke after that crash and.
Yeah, as I, walking away was one thing, when you said nobody was even injured or transported, it was just.
So, a very fortunate ending. And, you know, another piece that I throw in there, and the person that was arrested was also carrying a firearm with a permit. So not only impaired in driving a vehicle, but impaired in carrying a firearm. So a couple of different things they'll have to deal with in court, but again, fortunate for that incident to come out the way it did. And then I just, a couple other small items of note. I actually found out that councilmember Rainville was already digging into this, but over 2019, I was monitoring the different crashes that had been occurring on Viking Boulevard at Cleary Road. I thought we had a high, high number for that intersection and I had reached out and been speaking with folks at our county highway department, just because it's an intersection of two county roads. I provided them with all the different crash data, all the crash reports and stuff, and just asked them to take a look at what's going on here. Is this an intersection issue, is it, what's going on? And after I gave them all the information, they let me know, well, we just gotta, you know, we've been in contact with councilmember Rainville from, from Now Then already. So she was already on top of it. But through further conversations, and I'm not sure exactly how far you got with county highway, but there's a couple, there's a concern with the intersection. It meets all of the code requirements and the statutory requirements, but just barely. And one of them is being like the distance of some of the sight lines and things. I think it has a two foot, it, it meets the, the standard by two feet and they're.
If people are driving a speed limit.
Correct, and that was what I was gonna say. If people are, so that's all calculated based on a 55 mile an hour speed limit, which unfortunately, we know that most people don't drive 55 miles per hour. So I've got our patrol division trying to do as much as they can to monitor the speed there. County highway put up beacons on the, the red flashing beacons on top of the stop signs there. And in talking with them further, they, you know, the engineers say the next true step that would, that they would consider taking is making that a four-way stop, based on the crashes. And they go through and look at the different crashes. And when we fill out our crash reports, we try to put in information that talks about why did this crash happen? And that whole purpose is for this. So the traffic engineers can go back and look at those to see, is this an intersection issue? Is this a sighting issue? Is this, or is this just human error? Because sometimes that can be the cause. So I don't know where they're going to end up with it, but I wanted to at least let the council know that we see that there's a higher level of accidents there than we'd like and that it's normal for other intersections. And county highway is looking at it. They're doing some temporary things to see if the flashing red beacons on the stop signs help, because several of the crashes have involved people not stopping for that stop sign on Cleary Road at Viking Boulevard, so.
We do appreciate the county coming through with the beacons, that's been requested by a number of the neighbors there. And the county has said that it could be four-way stop, could be roundabout, could be stop lane.
Right.
They're investigating further on that, but right now, we were appreciative of the beacons.
And we'll try to continue to get them the crash information, so when they have to make a decision, they have the best information they can and it's not just a guess at what might help it.
We've tried to get the state to put the flashing beacons on 47 and Viking as well. I can't tell you the number of times I've been there and people just fly right up 47 and everything's slowing down.
Yeah.
It's just they get used to that and go right through the signs, so.
I, I completely understand. The last piece I had is just for the council's edification. The contract between the city of Now Then and Anoka County Sheriff's Office for Law Enforcement Services for 2020 went before the Anoka County Board in one of their last meetings and was approved. It was a five to one approval and, and passed. And just so you know, there was one lone no vote against the contract and that was Commissioner Look. I'm not exactly sure on all of the information, but it was, as to the whys, but it did pass, so that's a good thing.
It's funny, because he's our commissioner, he's never liked the sheriff exposure.
And that's something that I know that our risk management has worked with, the county to kind of show, kind of explain where things are, what, what's happened in the past and what truly is our exposure as far as liability. But at this point, the sheriff is, he wants to provide these services and that's the direction he's going to, he's going to go. So you don't have to worry on, on our end that this is, anything is gonna change. And I think if there was any other conversations, we'll continue to do what we're doing. I don't see that changing.
I appreciate it.
So, and if, if it happened to get where there was other questions or things, we would, we would keep the councils of our respective cities apprised, so there would never be any surprises on your end, as much as we could.
Yeah, I would imagine if something were to change, it would, would affect multiple municipalities.
Correct. So, and it's just something, we've done it for so long and it's, you know, it really has become something that I think the communities depend on, that you get the, you get good service for a reasonable price and, and.
I belong to the mayor's listserv and numerous counties are starting to do this with their sheriff's departments, or cities that are saying, the sheriff has the resources and the capabilities to do this, it makes sense to, to contracts.
Yeah, and I think ours, our oldest one goes back into the 70s, so it's been a long time. So, anyway, I just wanted to let the council know, we're continuing on as, as usual. And for next month would be our meet the deputy night. So we'll have some of our deputies that serve the city come in. I'll be here. The sheriff is gonna try to make it as well. I was able to get it on his calendar, which I think is a, that's a huge success for me. Now, if I don't get bumped for something, I'll, I'll be very happy. And he's very good about it. The council should know that he routinely does ask, how are things going? I, please tell them, give them my regards, I'm not ignoring them, I just, so he, he's, he's always busy and always working. And so I'm hopeful that he'll be able to make it this, to this month, next month's meeting. So that's all I have for a report, does the council have any questions?
Question, do we ever get the, the speed limit trailer over on 66?
It is in line. Unfortunately, we've, we only have a small amount of the resources, but it's scheduled to be there. That's, last I, when I checked last, it's the next spot to get it. So they'll put it up and instead of an actual trailer now, we have the flashing signs with the speed and it actually collects data. Instead of just showing cars when they go by that it has, that they're going a certain speed, it will actually, if we set it correctly, it will be able to provide us with data about different speeds of vehicles, et cetera.
Does it have a camera on it?
It does not, and we can't do that in Minnesota. That's a, that's, again, there's supreme court law in Minnesota that says we can't. That's why you don't see traffic cameras in large cities and stuff. It's not, it's not against the law in other states, but it is here, so.
Counsel, anything for the commander?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville?
To the, to the Cleary Road in, in 22, and that was a follow-up to the meeting that we had had here, the county had, in, in regards to the redo of Cleary Road. And the questions were the stop sign, or the, the speed, speedway and, and then the intersection there. And so I, it had been a while and there was some conversation on Facebook. I said, I'll go back and, and contact them again. And they did follow up and, and said they would be putting those lights out. And in that, yes, the, the intersection meets all the qualifications by this much. And it doesn't help that the trees are going, on the west, eastbound trees that are there, but that's private property, so they're gonna, would have to negotiate with private property to take those back. But they are aware of issues, they said they were working with the sheriff's office getting information and, and hopefully that'll be enough. I think most of it is just inattentive driving. That's, and people are taking, when people are taking a right turns, people are going around them and then they're not paying attention and people are coming out and it just seems like, but it just, if we could prevent some of the accidents, it would be nice, so.
It'd be very helpful.
All right, thank you very much.
All right, thanks.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Let's tie them on our agenda. The opportunity to introduce Scott Quallie, our new building official from Minspec. And I've asked Scott to come here and meet the council, let him get you back and meet Linda when she's back in town. But a chance to meet you and then to hear your thoughts on coming to Now Then and some of your priorities as a building official and working with us. Scott, welcome.
Well, thank you.
Appreciate your, your services.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. I appreciate the opportunity to be here and I do enjoy meeting council members and attending meetings. It's not something I love to do every night, but I do like to be here now and again. And one of the things I'll ask later is how often you want to see me, other than if we need to talk. So, let me give you a little background about myself. I'm 57, I've been married for 38 years. I have three kids who are all adults, I have eight grandchildren currently. My wife stays at home and takes care of two of them, while the others are 18 to 18 months, 18 years to 18 months is kind of the range that we have there. I, I bought a company called Paul Waldron and Associates back in 2005. It was founded in 1984. Paul had started it when Carver County and a number of communities in the Minutrista, Waconia, Watertown area decided that they were gonna start doing code enforcement. And so they hired Paul as the, his company to be their, their building official. And he retired in 2005 and I bought the company at that time. We renamed it Minspec in 2008, just as a function of the sale. Kind of happy that we ended up doing that. I don't know that I'd still want to be Paul Waldron and Associates, so I think Minspec is a better identity for us. We have 25 people who work for us, for me. We, we have grown into a, I, I use the term, if we were a real company, we would fill in the blank. And we have become a real company. We have a management team, I have a director of operations, his name is Ty Turnquist. He happens to be my brother-in-law. He is very skilled in code enforcement and plan review. He also takes care of a lot of the personnel and HR functions at the office. I have a management team, in addition to Tracy Montgomery, who has been up here and has met with Laurie. Jeff Munster Tiger is our plan review manager of plans examination and Barry Brainerd is our manager of field inspections. So with that team, the five of us, we, we manage what needs to be done and make sure that the customer, and that means both the city that we work for and the constituents of that community are being well-served. We have an affinity for former designated building officials. So Jeff Munster Tiger, Ty, Barry, Brainerd, Lenny Rutledge, who used to be in Minnetaka before that, and Hutchinson, David and Carl, all are former building officials in other communities that we have hired away, if you will, because they're very skilled at what we need them to do. And they take care of the higher level kinds of issues and priorities that need to be taken care of. So if you think about a normal company that does this work, they typically have one person, the billing official, and then a bunch of people who are doing inspections or plan review and that's it. And we've got a, like I said, a management team with a bunch of very highly skilled individuals working under us. And the, one of the goals that we pursue is the idea of uniformity. So we're talking amongst ourselves on a fairly regular basis to discuss the code. I wish the code was black and white, I wish it was a nice clean line that we could decide if we're gonna be on this side of the line or that side of the line. And it's not really for us to decide, it's for the applicant to decide. But if you want to build a warehouse and put stuff in it and you want to make it 12,002 square feet, you're gonna sprinkle it. And if you want to be 11,998, you don't have to sprinkle it. That's the line and everybody understands what that line is. But there's a lot of areas in the code that are gray. And I hate gray in the code, because we can all decide that if it's this, we shouldn't do it and if it's this, we should do it. But someone is gonna get us to try and make a decision about where the line is, the fine line between yes and no. And that's not always as easy to do. So we try and make our policies consistent with the intent of the code. What does the code say? What is the evolution of the code? What is the next code gonna say? What did the last code say? What does the commentary of the code say? So we try and evaluate those, we talk amongst ourselves, we have management team meetings to discuss those kinds of things, specifically to try and come up with the right answer. And that's not what I thought it should be always, it's what the code, we think the code intends for it to be. And we always have the contractor and the homeowner and the city and ourselves in mind when we make those determinations. So we're thinking about it from different perspectives and that's why it's nice to have that group of people, because they, well, when I was in Hutchinson, we did this, or when I was in Minnetaka, we did that. And those kinds of conversations can take us to places that we wouldn't have gone to on our own. It's very easy for someone to kind of get a god complex, especially if you're a one person, you know, if I was just an employee of Now Then and I was a billing official, it'd be real easy to go, well, that's the way we do it in Now Then and that's the way it's gonna be. Without that other input and perspective, you're sort of limited to your view or your perspective on the code. And you can read the language and then have someone present it to you in a different context and go, ooh, gosh, I never thought about it that way. And that's kind of what we bring to the table with all the team that are there. And that's kind of what we bring to the table with all the team that are there. In addition to that group of, uh, former building officials, we've got six support staff. So, their job is to answer the phones and take care of, again, customers, make sure scheduling is happening and all those kinds of things. We're committed to doing inspections same day if possible, next day otherwise. Uh, and unless we can talk someone into doing it tomorrow or the day after tomorrow, I guess I should say, we're, we're gonna be here. If they've gotta have it tomorrow, we're gonna be here tomorrow, because that's my commitment to you. I believe that you're paying me a fair sum to do my job. And I believe that my job is to serve, again, both you and the folks that are doing work in your community. And so that means I need to be here. I can't have inspections phoned in. I can't say, you go ahead and I'll check it later. If my job is to inspect the work, I gotta be there. I gotta inspect the work, sign off on it if it's okay or issue correction notices if it's not, and allow people to do their job. From a plan review perspective, I would like to say that we're gonna have plans back in five days. I won't promise that, but that is our goal, to be less than five days. Currently for residential, it's at ten days. That's what our contract says, uh, fifteen for commercial. But that assumes that we have a complete submittal. And when we get a two-page plan and we need a six-page plan or we need additional documents for mechanical or, uh, energy code worksheets or things like that, it's sort of, the timer's not running until we get all the information we need. We do have someone that checks in permits right away and reviews them and gets communication back to the applicant right away to indicate to them that we are missing these four things. Uh, these two things we'll wait on till later. That's okay, but these two things we need to have to proceed. So, trying to manage people's expectations so they know what they need and so that we can keep their project rolling through our office so it can get back so they can start working on it. In terms of, uh, our priorities, uh, I think uniformity is one of the things that I think every building official struggles with in a, in a department other than one person, because it's easy for me to be uniform with myself. But when we've got a team of twenty-five people, I need everybody to be working on the same page. And again, management team and our job, in my opinion, partly is to try and have everybody on the same page with regards to what the code says and what the code requires. And, uh, I will go on to my next point, the idea that my job is to enforce the code. That's what I believe you've hired me to do. If you have someone who calls you and says, they're being mean to me, it's probably not they were being disrespectful to me, but that we're requiring them to comply with the code. And I'll, I will have meetings with my staff here with a, or at the city office with a contractor. If they have questions about what we're doing or what we're enforcing or why we have to do it, uh, my only authority is what the code tells me to do. So, the administrative chapter of the code thirteen hundred tells me that these are my roles and responsibilities as a building official. One of them is to enforce and interpret the code. And then I'm left with the ten books that go with that and the fifty books that go with them, the reference standards and all that. I just spent forty-five hundred dollars on my code library and I haven't bought any code books for the new code cycle. So, we're gonna have a new code in, uh, March thirtieth in theory of twenty twenty. We'll have a, the twenty twenty Minnesota residential and, and building code and fire code and all the other codes that go with that. We've been working off the two thousand and fifteen codes, which are the IRC or the ICC two thousand and twelve code. So, we're gonna go up to the eighteen codes, make them the twenty Minnesota codes, and that's what we'll be enforcing going forward. So, we're updating all of our handouts and our worksheets so people know what they have to do. Lori can hand them out. They can call us. They can get ahold of them off the website and find, oh, I'm doing a deck project. Here's what the code requires. Or here's what the code says, or here's what I need to submit. So, all those documents will be in place, uh, and we'll, we'll be ready to go. I don't think we're gonna actually have published books before March thirtieth. To be honest with you, I'm a little disappointed with that. The state, uh, legislature passed a law that said that the publication date had to be sixty-six months, sorry, a hundred and eighty days prior to the implementation date. And the construction codes and licensing division or building codes and standards unit has officially published by publishing the amendments to the codes on whatever system they use to publish them. But we won't actually have a physical code book, I believe, until at least forty-five days after the code is in effect. And again, I find that frustrating because contractors are supposed to comply and my guys are all supposed to know what they're supposed to be enforcing when we don't even have a book yet that tells us that. So, just be aware that there'll be a transition coming up in the spring of this year with regards to codes. And we should have all of our, uh, hopefully most of our, uh, handouts and worksheets, uh, ready and updated for that. Uh, another priority would be reasonable fees. And I believe, again, I'm being paid fairly for the work that we're doing and the contract that we established with the community here. Uh, I have a real problem with communities that, um, charge significant fees and don't provide significant service and then put that money in the general fund. And besides the fact that it's against the law, um, I live in Plymouth and the Builder Association of Minnesota, which isn't the Builder Association of Minnesota anymore, they've changed their name. But they've done a very extensive forty-five or sort of forty-six page report on cities that are retaining billing permit fees. And Plymouth is one of the cities that shows up on that list over and over and over again. And I've been frustrated by that for years because I had a re-roof job done on my house and they do evaluation-based permit for re-roofs and it was a three hundred and forty-seven dollar permit. And, uh, I called the city. I was a billing official in, you know, in the same capacity I'm in now and said, what do you want to see for an inspection? And they said, uh, we want to see the roof when it's done. I said, do you want pictures? No. Do you want access? No. Do you, do we need to be home? No. Do you want to see the contractor? No. Okay. Uh, just call us when it's done. So, my wife called and the inspector showed up, walked up the driveway, grabbed the card out of her hand, signed off on the card, handed it back, walked back to his car and drove away for three hundred and forty-seven dollars. So, that results in two and a half million dollars in excess billing permit fees in the city of Plymouth that go into the general fund, presumably. I don't know where else they'd go. But that's not right. I teach continuing ed to contractors and I, I can get on a soapbox and talk for a half hour about that. It's not what anybody expects the system to be. The homeowners don't expect that. The contractors don't expect that. This is supposed to be a fee-for-service concept. And if I, if you unadopt the code and made it go away, if that was possible, it isn't, but if it was, I'd go away and all those fees would go away and you'd lose the revenue that goes with it. That's how it's supposed to be. So, the revenue isn't supposed to be revenue. It's supposed to cover the cost of the work that gets done at the front office and the cost of me doing my job and some administrative and overhead pieces that go with that. But the city of Minneapolis made thirty million dollars on the permit for the stadium and they certainly didn't triple the size of their department for the two years it was being constructed, right? So, that's the challenge that I have with fees. And again, I think that you're on a good fee schedule. We'll probably maybe do some tweaking of that if we haven't already. I don't remember if we've talked about that or not. We'll, we'll go through your ordinances, make sure that they're all up to date, that they're enforcing the right code. And if they're not, we'll make recommendations about that. We'll look through your fee schedules, not to necessarily change the fee schedule you're on, but to discuss, ooh, there's supposed to be a return or a, a refund policy. That's not in your fee schedule anywhere, so we should add that. So, we'll try and make sure that you're compliant with all the requirements of the code as well. Finally, uh, to help our, our, if you look at my business card that I handed out, our job is to help you comply with the code. And that's helping the city as well as helping contractors, as well as helping homeowners comply with the code. Ultimately, our job is to protect property owners from people who do work. Really, that's what it is. Sometimes it's protecting a future homeowner from a current homeowner. Because, uh, homeowners aren't always on, on top of all the requirements and one of our jobs is to make sure that it, it's being done to the minimum standards of the code. But I will reiterate the fact that the code is a minimum standard. For me, it's a ceiling. I am required to push contractors to that minimum standard. But for a contractor, it is the floor. It is the lowest that they can do. It is a, a D minus. It's the lowest passing grade they can get. They can do D work, C work, B work, A work if they wanna. That's fine. I'm not gonna say anything about that. My job is to get them to the floor and then I'm done. That's the end of my job. So, to enforce the code, the whole code, but nothing more than the code. That's what I believe my role is. And it's all within the confines of the administrative chapter of the, of the Minnesota rule, chapter thirteen hundred. Okay, so having said all of that, uh, that's what I'm about. That's who I am and what we're trying to do here. Um, I'd like to know a couple of things from you. What do you expect from me? What do you need from me? When do you want to see me? And what kind of reporting do you want from me?
You guys didn't know there was gonna be a quiz, did you? Yeah. Yeah, I think the reporting, we'll have to, thank you, Commander. You know, con- confirm with Lori on this. Previously, we, you know, we obviously, we get our monthly invoices, so we, we get an activity report with that.
Yeah, there'll be a, you'll get a invoice with, uh, the detail that goes with that. Plus, there will be a summary, a quarter-to-date, month-to-date, quarter-to-date, year-to-date summary, uh, as well, that's kind of separate from the bill. It's just a information piece that you can put in the packet. And then in addition to that, we typically do the surcharge reports as well. So, that'll, at a minimum, you'll have that.
And I think that, you know, if we're getting those reports, that should be sufficient. Obviously, if there's anything that, uh, that you see that we should be brought to our attention, you know, funnel that through Lori and she'll get that in our packet. Or send it right, you know, she can send it right out to the council. Um, yeah, obviously, working with our constituents, the businesses and the homeowners and the contractors in this area, it's an important, uh, uh, service. And so, the customer service aspect and one of the, the things in, in choosing your company was the prospect of excellent customer service. We understand, um, homeowners in particular, but contractors will have a difference of opinion on interpretation of the code. We're expecting that, that there's a professional discussion that goes on with that. Um, we've, we've talked about education and, uh, one of the things you're providing, the brochures, the, the handouts in the city offices. But helping people understand, uh, the value, but also understand how they need to do things. You know, especially when, when you live out here, there tends to be a lot of, um, independent thought when it comes to any type of construction. And so, helping people understand the necessity of it without beating them up. And so, the, the, I think that's an important part of our relationship. Obviously, response time is a big thing. Uh, when, when people have projects going on, they don't always think how much in advance they need to do things. And so, uh, you know.
Mind not having appreciation for the processes that, uh, application has to go through, right? There's planning and land use issues as well as the building code review and all that. So, I'm, I understand and appreciate that.
So, part of that is, is the educational part as well.
Sure.
But we, we like to, we like to make sure that whatever's being done is, is as clear as possible to the non-technical person. Uh, we want to make sure that when we're interpreting codes, we're not talking legalese. We're talking homeowner language or appropriate to the contractor level that you're working with. And I think that's, that's a big part of it, you know, that it's communicated effectively. Because that's where people kind of get lost on it. And so, if we can come in and at the level, the appropriate level where people are at and communicate that, I think that's a, a big part of the success we have. Because obviously, your work is reflected on, on us as a council and us as a city, so. So, we appreciate your thoroughness. Appreciate, and Lori's already told me a number of times how much she appreciates the systems you have in place. She can go online and see exactly where a permit is, who's got it, who's passed it, who's yet to see it. And, and that's very helpful, you know. It's, it's nice to be able to have that quick response and, and openness. And, uh, when you're dealing with contractors, especially when they have multiple projects going on.
Sure.
So, we appreciate that.
And I, openness is certainly one of the philosophies that we have. I'm, you know, it's your fee schedule. People ask us, how did you get to this fee? Well, we calculate the valuation. We take the valuation. We run it against your fee schedule. We determine that and, you know, our fee falls out of that and all those other things. But, uh, we write valuations on the, on the permit applications when they come back so that it isn't some mystical, you know, pay no attention to the man behind the curtain thing. I, I, I have to deal with those questions when people ask, but at the same time, it, hiding it isn't the right way to go about it. So, we want to make sure that everything's open and clear and you can connect a dot from A to B without any, you know, obfuscation and frustration about how'd you get from there to there. Uh, those kinds of things are really important to me because it's the system, the process is messy and cloudy and frustrating enough without then having it be, again, obscured by a, a mystery. So, we try and be very open and clear about how things get done and how they get from place to place so that everyone, it should be accountable. It should be auditable, in fact, and everyone should be able to get to the same spot if they look at it the way it should be looked at.
My understanding is there will actually be physical cards on, on site as well that the inspectors, permit cards. Inspectors will physically sign it.
Yeah.
So, if we're going about the community, we should be able to see the, the permit cards on projects.
Absolutely, and we would hope. They're supposed to be posted in an obvious place, visible from the street is the idea. Uh, and so that should be out there. If you see work going on and you'll see a permit card, you can certainly call our office or call Lori and have her check on the computer and figure out if there's something there or not. Easy for us to figure out one way or the other. And we'd be happy to, you know, we usually start off with a visit, find out what's happening. And if it, if they're just replacing carpet, you know, we'll just say, good luck with that and leave, because nobody cares about replacing carpet. But if it's a larger project or something that requires some additional attention, we'll have a, you know, a nice conversation with them about the fact that, geez, the permit is required for that work and, uh, you know, if you can get your plans together and get them down to the city right away, that'd be great.
And so, so in a case like that, you approach it educationally?
We try to. Um, the, the code has a penalty, I put air quotes around penalty because it's not allowed to be called a penalty. It's a special investigation fee. But when someone's, um, uh, I will say, when the contractor's working out a permit, there really isn't any question. They're gonna get double fee on the permit. From my perspective, they, they know. They should have known. If they claim they didn't know, they just, they, they're not telling us the truth. If a homeowner, you know, starts off with a, gosh, I was just taking off a little drywall or patching some drywall and all of a sudden I, you know, I've got no insulation and blah, 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 we're just gonna say, hey, let's get a permit in place and let's move on from there. Here's the things you have to identify. Show us the plan. Show us where in the house it's happening and on and on. So, it's typically not intended to be punitive, but at the same time, if there was no penalty, uh, everyone would work without a permit until they got caught and then they would just have to pay the fee they were gonna pay anyway. And so, that's why the, the penalty fee or the special investigation fee's in place. But we try and use that judiciously to make sure that we're not, it really, there's a place for it and it's when people should have known or did know and didn't bother to, as opposed to folks who had no idea and stumbled into it by accident.
Counsel? Mr. Mayor, I have two things. One is, um, you mentioned the fee schedule. So, do we have a, um, timeframe on when we think we could get together on, or you and Lori and staff and, and yourself get together and mesh that?
I would guess in the next thirty days. Do you meet once a month? Sorry, I should know that, but I don't.
Right now.
I would guess probably not March, but April.
By April.
If that's okay. Um, we'll have, I, it doesn't take hours and hours and hours. Because education is something Jeff brought up. I'm sorry to divert for a minute. I teach continuing education for contractors. And it started off, to be honest with you, in two thousand and eleven when things were really slow and I wasn't sure how we were gonna make payroll. There was only seven of us and I needed to figure out a way to, to make some more money. And I figured, well, I can teach contractors the code. And so, I put together a class and drove around and taught it in twenty locations or whatever it was, and we made it through that winter. Well, now I have almost a thousand students that I teach continuing ed to. And so, I, January, February and March, bless in March, then in January, February, I'm driving tonight. I'll be going to Northfield tomorrow to, um, Rochester after that and then to Mankato and back to my home for the weekend. So, education is a cornerstone of our business because I believe that contractors have a right to know what the code says and what the code means. And so, having said that, that really is an important piece of what we're doing. So, sorry to diverge there.
The second thing I have is, um, you asked about how often do we want to see you? As you're new to us, as our building inspector, I would like to ask that you could come back in six months, say in August.
Okay.
And just, uh, let us know how you think it's going. Um, is there anything else you need from us? With the understanding if there's anything, uh, urgent that we would know about it in the meantime.
And same, if you need something, you know, we'll be here. May not be me. It usually will be, but it may not be. I kind of, most of the crowd lives around Waconia. There are a few that live in different spots, but, uh, I happen to live in Plymouth and so it's only a thirty-minute or so drive from home. So, I will most likely be the person coming to council meetings, not necessarily the person here during the day to do the inspections. But, uh, you'll, you'll see me and again, if something comes up, I'd be happy to be here more often. But we will plan on a semi-annual check-in, how's it going? Make sure we're all on the same page and everything's going well.
All right. Thank you.
Dan, Joel, Henry?
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
And, and have you and Liz met?
We have not officially met. Nice to meet you, Scott.
So, Liz is our, our planner. And she's doing our code enforcement at this point, so.
I, I know of her. She, her reputation precedes her so far. That's good.
Thank you.
All right. Lori, anything else we should know from your experience so far?
It's been very good in the office. We've learned a lot and had, uh, many, well, a couple of Minspec employees come out and do personal training on the actual system and learn about the permitting and what we need. And we have flow charts. If they do this, they need this information. If they do that, they need this information. It's been very nice.
Great. I'm, I'm glad that's helpful. I, I have a lot of, um, empathy for folks who run cities, the, the professional full-time people that run cities. Because the expectations, I think, from council along with the residents and everyone else in the world who has, applies influence, uh, they have to be a master of, you know, fifty things. Uh, you know, everything from elections to public data to, you know, all the things that they have to know. And if we don't make our part of it, which is fairly technical and not necessarily something that's involved every day, by giving you the, those tools, that information that makes it. it easy to do, all I've done is make your life more miserable instead of less. And I don't want, the last thing I want is for us to just take over everything. You just have them all send it to us. Well, now you're out of the loop. You don't know what's what, who's got when, when it showed up. That's, you know, starts to mess with the clarity. The money comes here. I don't want to kick money unless it's a, someone's making a reinspection fee, the check will be payable to the city, we'll give it to you with our billing. But otherwise, the money comes here, everything starts here, everything stops here. It's all about the transparency of the process. And so we're the back office making things happen, but it all, it's, they're your permits, I'm your building official, I'm doing the work that you need me to do, so.
We appreciate that.
Great.
All right. Well, thank you for taking the evening and joining us.
No problem. Thank you for having me. I appreciate that opportunity.
Be thorough in your presentations.
Great. Have a good night.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. What do I follow?
Nothing.
All right. So, the consent agenda, just run through that quickly. On the consent agenda, we're approving minutes from our last meeting and our special city council meeting that we had on February 3rd. On the treasurer's report on the claims, I have asked Lori if she can hold the check for CenterPoint Energy on the gas line issue from last August. And I'm going to follow up with CenterPoint and see if that's a legitimate bill to be paid. So, other than that, we're going to be submitting the claims as submitted to us. We'll be paying the claims. We will hold that one check back. We have the appointing of the city responsible authority, which is Lori. We'll have that in our January packet next year with the other appointments. We pulled out item D. Item E, Resolution 202013, accepting a donation from Andover firefighters. I think you saw the pictures there. Todd Lindorf and Charlie, is it Taiken or Tiken? They assembled that turnout gear dryer and donated that to us. They were doing that, I think, for Andover and knew that it was an opportunity for them to be generous with us. And so we greatly appreciate that. And Lori has sent them a thank you, and I think some...
I actually have thank you cards here, I thought maybe council would like to say.
Yes. And then I think we were going to offer them something too.
I would like to.
For their effort. So we would like to, even though it's a gift to us and they aren't asking anything for it, it's an $800 to $1,000 item. And so we would like to give each of them a $100 gift card.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I understand the thought process behind that. I just would ask that we verify that that city fund's going to be used for that, okay?
All right. So if Lori verifies that that is acceptable, that the council's wishes, meets approval. So if it is, if not, let us know. But we do appreciate their thoughtfulness in making that for us, and it's certainly wonderful to have something like that to dry out the gear.
Makes a big difference, especially in Minnesota winters, when you're out slopping in the snow.
I looked at it, it's like my boot dryer at home. It's a big version of a boot dryer, and I know how, I love getting in those warm boots, at least when they're dry. So we pulled item F, we pulled item G, and we pulled item H. So those are the things on the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville?
I move that we pass the consent agenda as amended.
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right. So the first item on the council is the Now Then Threshing Show ad. So we have a request to submit a business card size ad with our existing logo in the Threshing Show brochure, which is currently at the printers, waiting for decision. Cost is $160. The question is, is this an investment the council would like to make? We do have a spot that Lori found that we could utilize funds from, if we think this is a good investment for the council.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville?
I believe it is a good investment. We've been doing it for, since, at least as a city, being, since we've been a city. I don't remember if we did it as a township. I see this no differently than the ad that we place on the map that Noka County sends out of the county and all the cities. I'm not sure when we last did that one. Okay. But I see it as advertising for the city, and it's a good investment. It's the largest event to occur in our city. And some people only know the city based on the Threshing Show. And so I think it's important. And if Lori has found a location to use funds from it, that's great. I think we just need to, for the 2021 budget, to look at additional funds for things such as this.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Brian?
Yeah, I would agree with Councilmember Rainville. I mean, that's one of the bigger, one of the, a big attraction for the city, and anything we can do to support the Threshing Show, that we can certainly show our part. We have, since we have done it in the past, I don't see any reason why we can't do it going forward.
I think that probably one of the concerns is it's not the most impressive ad that we could run. It's pretty small. And I, you know, if I know Lori, you would probably, in the future, if we're going to do this, have something that's more representative of our city.
I'll make sure this one is.
Okay. So with that being said, there's consensus that we would support putting the ad in there and giving Lori the freedom to make it as attractive as possible. I'll accept a motion to move forward with that.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Brian?
To make a motion to approve the ad for the Now Then Threshing Show at Lori's discretion.
I will second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Brian?
Not meaning to interrupt, I'm just wondering if Planner Stockman could mute the mic. Thank you.
I'll submit the updated version, so we can see what we're submitting.
Thank you. Better, much better. All right. So the first thing we pulled out was item D, renewing the 2020 contract with North Metro Animal Control.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville?
I had submitted to Lori some questions in regards to the contract as it was submitted. One of my concerns was that they were asking for a two-year contract, and I think we should stay at a one-year, which is what we've always had. Lori did respond to my questions and agreed with that, so that we would change the contract to read December 31, 2020. In what my packet I picked up today had this cover sheet that I don't remember seeing before, just this piece. Did this just come in from them?
Nope, that should have been with the packet.
Okay. But originally, all we received was the contract. This was, today was the first time I saw this piece.
No, I think that was scanned with the, it should have been with the packet.
But the packet today, not when, not the draft last week.
I got, pull this one, this again. Is this sheet?
Yeah. I'd not, okay, I'd not seen this. Okay, all right.
I had to fold it over, because I was looking at the contract.
Okay. All right, okay. One of the things I want, though, is that he talks about, you know, if he's driving through the area and he sees animals and he picks them up, I would prefer that it not be proactive. We do have loose animals in Now Then, I don't disagree with that. But I think a lot of our animals are found pretty quickly through the Facebook page. And I don't want to see our residents being burdened by fines for having a loose animal. And if it's out there a long time and somebody makes a call on it, that's one thing. But I don't want him to be proactively looking for dogs that have been reported on Facebook as being lost. And I know he talks about a public safety issue, but I think that we do a good job of policing, our residents do a good job of policing their dogs, keeping them in their properties. And if one gets out real, and they find them real quickly, that's great, rather than having them brought to a kennel and then them having costs associated with it. The other question I had...
So to that point, are you asking something specific to be amended? Because that's, that's an aspiration, but I don't think it's clear direction to Lori.
That was more just my aspirational. And he did say that he's not interested in proactively looking for loose dogs, that they does not, will not, never patrol, but if he's going through the community. I just want him to understand that that's really not what I'm looking for, whether the council is okay with that or not.
So is the council asking that Lori would communicate that to Mr. Anderson?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Brian?
I know we've had, I know that this exact same, I know, I'm pretty sure I brought up the same thing last year when he was here, and I'm going, if it is, has it really been an issue? And yes, I know, there's a lot of, hey, my dogs got out, if you see them, grab them and let me know, and that kind of thing. And I'm pretty sure he, you know, reiterated that, yeah, I'm not coming out here to patrol whatever.
As long as he just understands that, that's...
I'll just ask Lori to communicate that to him, that's council's wishes, not to, not to be too assertive.
Right.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville?
Have we heard back if anyone has actually had a dog picked up by him by any chance? Have you heard anything, Lori?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville?
To Councilmember Greenberg. One of the questions I had asked were the, what were our 2019 animal control expenses and 18? And in 2019, they processed 25 animals for the city. City of Now Then was billed for $255 for three unclaimed animals. So he is, you know, and whether their resident's calling or whether the sheriff calls, that I don't know. But he did pick up 25 animals. It was 24 the year prior. And the other question I had was on the kennel inspection. That was an addendum to his contract. Along with the other addendum was the vicious dogs. Yeah, dangerous dogs. I don't know, do we, if staff can tell us, do you think that that is something we need to contract for, or is that something we can do internally?
Did he say that was a state licensing issue that he was dealing with?
No, that was the dangerous dog.
When you say, "Can we do it?" Councilmember Rainville, I don't know who we would have do that.
So at this point, we're not looking at?
You want to go check, yes?
Probably would, since I'm a dog lover, but...
I mean, right now, when we have a complaint on animals, Liz handles that, correct?
Yeah, at least at the starting point. If I would determine if we're a dangerous dog situation, you know, that progressed, then it would become a sheriff issue.
Okay.
Are we licensing our kennels right now?
We, yeah, if there are more than five dogs.
Who's doing that?
They come into the city office.
So do we actually inspect?
We haven't, no.
So what he's offering here is the inspection addendum. City shall pay kennel license inspection rate of $15 an hour for services. Is that something, if we were to set up with that, would be passed on to the kennel?
I think it could be, for sure.
Should be.
Should be, yeah.
I mean, you would, you would think anybody running a licensed kennel operation would want to be consistent with whatever regulations there are.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Brian?
Are there state statutes requiring the inspection of kennels? Or is this just a fee that's being provided? Or a service that is being provided?
Looks like the service he's offering is an addendum here. I know we've had problems with kennels in the past. We usually bring in Humane Society.
Right. We've had issues that are still ongoing. I think it would be a good idea if they were inspected, at least periodically, you know, whether or not it's annually. We'd have to look at our dog ordinance, as well as what the state statutes require. Because since some of these places were issued a kennel license, the state statutes have changed also. So it'd be worth a look to see where we're, where we stand there.
So to investigate this further, Lori, how would you like to have the council direct in something that maybe Liz could look into, or is it something that you can check with your counterparts in your network?
I mean, we could do both. I can find out what neighboring cities, how they're handling it, and I think...
I know what the regulations are.
Mm-hmm.
I do think if somebody's running a licensed facility, you want to make sure it's being done right.
I would, I would suspect the code enforcement officer is probably who's inspecting those in other cities, which would be Ms. Stockman.
Right. And then you would involve the Humane Society if you had issues too.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville?
I would then prefer that we agree to the contract minus the addendum for the kennel inspection until we've had further conversation on that, to determine what route we want to go. If he's looking at doing this, or, is the dollar amount on the... To me, the dollar amount he mentioned was very reasonable.
On the inspection?
On the inspections.
It's on the, it's on the addendum, it's $15 an hour.
Okay. So I would, I would move that we would approve the contract for one year, ending December 31, 2020, without the addendum for the kennel inspection, and then we'll work on that.
With the addendum for the dangerous dogs?
Dangerous dogs, yes.
All right. And so then, to clarify your motion, the kennel licensing, we would hold off at this point pending our clerk treasurer's investigation with the neighboring cities, and the investigation of the requirements, state requirements, if there are, whatever legal requirements there are for kennels, and have that discussion, so that we can go back and add this to that once we know what's required and who on our part's going to do it. So we know, Lori, what you, you and your staff's role is and what the code enforcement role is. So I want to have that clearly defined. And then I also would like to add to your motion here, that we find out if we can charge these inspection fees to the kennel operator, as opposed to the city. Is that a legal and appropriate way to do it? All right? So we have a motion to approve as a one-year contract with the dangerous dog addendum, and holding on the kennel licensing inspection addendum until we have the specified information. A second.
I'll second.
Motion a second, any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Item F, Engineer Nelson's soil boring summary with proposal. We have a meeting with residents this Thursday. I may have missed something here. But I've, I've got a proposal for Independent Testing Technologies and HOGO, HOGO Geotechnical Services. And there's some details in here, but I'm not exactly sure what we're getting. There's going to be more soil boreings than we originally thought. A question was asked, is this for all three projects? And we think that answer is yes.
I don't know that answer.
Okay, we don't know that answer.
I have several questions into the engineer and I haven't heard back yet. I do believe he's on vacation.
He just got back today, so he was putting out fires.
Okay, so he will be here Thursday. So we have questions on this, because I have no idea if we do increase soil boreings, if this is sufficient to tell us what we need to know, to know if this project's going to be good. And secondarily, if they find deficiencies in, in the soil, based on these boreings, what that's going to do to our cost in those roads. So I really can't move forward with this until the engineer explains more to us and what the value is and the consequence of the discoveries. And I have no idea what that's going to do to a, a discussion on Thursday night.
Cause it, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryant.
Right, cause it would, can, potentially would, can dramatically impact the, all three proj, proposed projects from a cost perspective.
Correct.
If it's really bad, I'm just thinking, as be, as we're getting into time, time being of the essence on some of these to get, at least to get bids in, are we going to have to move on getting anything prior to next month? Or to have that discussion about that? Or would just the soil boreings, would that just be information that would be used to go forward to get, with the quotes?
Well, not knowing what the consequence would be, and, and the effectiveness, I mean, we asked him to, we asked the engineer to provide us with what's necessary. I don't think we said just increase the number of soil boreings. We said figure out what it's going to take to figure out that we've got a good base for these roads.
Right.
There's no good, there's no purpose in putting a new road over bad base. So the assumption that, that this is what's necessary to tell us we're going to have a good base for these roads is an assumption. I can't obviously spend $10,000 on an assumption. But the second part of that, it isn't addressed in this proposal here, is what's the consequence if they come up with soil boreings and say, these are bad bases? And, and obviously, people are out on Facebook ahead of us saying that soil boreings that were done previously show that it's not a good base. So, we need to know the consequences. Is this sufficient to tell us what we need to know? And secondarily, what might be the consequences? Because if it's simply the $10,000, and it's not going to change the rest of the project, then we keep the numbers as they are and the city, I propose the city takes that out of our road fund. If this is going to add $100,000 or $500,000 to the projects-
Which it potentially could.
We have a significantly different discussion. And that could impact dramatically our discussions on Thursday evening.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Greenberg.
In both of the proposals, they mention three separate sites. Boring for three different areas. So, boring for all the-
But I don't know how far apart those boreings are. Is it, is it sufficient to say where we know we've had water problems in the past on Ebony and Garnett is, is the same as the soil types we're dealing with over in Krypton? And so I know they're, they're dealing with three sites. But with what we know about those three sites, do you want to have the same number of boreings on all three of them? Or Ebony and Garnett really require a few more? So I think that there's questions we need the engineer to ha, to answer. And, you know, the only, the only option short of that is having him send something to us before Thursday night. Or at the beginning of our first meeting, we have to have that discussion on Thursday. And as it stands right now, Linda will still be out of town, so it's the three amigos. So, at this point, I'm going to move to table that until we hear more from Engineer Nelson.
Second, sir.
All right, we have a motion a second, any other discussion? Oh, okay, seeing and hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Next one I had, I pulled out the bonding and for road improvements.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I pulled out G, which was after the CDC meeting.
CDC meeting?
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, Stockman is asking for approval to attend the meeting with the Met Council for our comp plan review. I, I personally don't see the need for her to be there. They have the information, they've had plenty of time to ask questions, we've responded to those questions. I think it's pretty much a done deal. And at $250 for her to attend plus mileage, I, I just don't see the value there. So I would move that we do not approve her attending.
We have a motion.
I'll second for discussion.
Motion a second. I'll start off the discussion, I'd ask Planner Stockman the benefit, as you see it.
To date, we've just been working with Met Council staff. So, the planner, our representative, Eric Wycheck, will present our comp plan to the actual council. And then they will act upon it. So I would be there in case there are questions. And then, like I said in the email, they do like to thank the cities. And I thought it would be nice to have a representative there. It's not mandatory by any means, but, you know, if, if questions do come up, it could be delayed. You know, hopefully not, because we are, you know, a smaller city, our comp plan's not as involved as some. But, yeah, it's entirely up to you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryant.
My question would be probably for Planner Stockman as well as everyone else. With our legislation, do we even see that even making a difference? Or that they, do they, I mean, as I recall, they, it's, they have to approve it no matter what?
Yeah, they can't go back on the legislation at all. So, I, I did ask about Oak Grove's plan, and theirs went through without any-
So I understand if they had questions, it'd be good to be able to answer them. But, I mean, is it pretty typical that cities are there to be representing them, to be representative, or?
Yeah, usually people do show up, but like I said, it's, it's up to you. It's, it's not mandatory, but, you know, just in case, I guess. I wouldn't want to see it delayed, but I don't expect that it will be either. Based on what I've heard, you know, you never know. It's like something coming before you and somebody on the council may have a, you know, something that puts it on the table and, or off the table rather than-
Sure, I understand that, I'm just going to, again, I'm just trying to go back to, if it has to be approved, how could it be delayed? And that's what I'm trying to understand.
Oh, well, it's not all necessarily related to that state law change. It's just generally speaking too, you know.
At the end.
But we have met, I mean, according to their, all the staff have, you know, reviewed it and said that it meets the requirements for the year.
Yeah, they, they, they sent back and said, here's the things you have to do. We've corrected those, we've got-
Right.
Engineering and maps and all the things that they asked us to tweak, we've tweaked.
Right, we've done that.
And, and to your point, Oak Grove, a little more complex than ours, and they sailed right through.
Yep, they did.
Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Greenberg.
Uh, it doesn't seem like it's totally necessary that Liz goes. However, I want to say to Liz Stockman, thank you very much for all the hard work that you have put into our comp plan.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Well, I, I think if it, you know, anticipated sails through, yes, that's commendable on your part, so.
Thank you, yeah, it wasn't kind of a long time coming.
Sometimes it's hurting cats out here for-
Pardon me?
It can be like hurting cats out here.
Well, we, we all worked hard, really. I mean, it dragged out longer than we wanted it to, but it worked out, so. We have a plan that we like and want to achieve, so that's the whole goal, as far as land use.
All right, any other questions, comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryant.
Still trying to wrap my hand in the head around this. So it's, it's more or less an optional thing, we don't specifically see any problems going through.
Right.
Yeah, I, why don't I-
We, we have worked with the, the Met Council's staff to, we submitted our draft, they came back and said, here's some things we want you to clean up, we've cleaned those things up. So it's just a final approval. Eric will be presenting it to the whole of the council, and they'll vote on it.
So, how could this, for the lack of a better word, backfire?
You're dealing with a Met Council.
Or any council, really, you know.
Yeah, just, if, if, if somebody has a question that Eric can't answer, and-
Yes.
And presumably Liz could. But, again, it'd be one vote out of, how many on the council, 19 or?
Yeah, and I think there's only a portion of them at the actual CDC. It makes up part, partly Met Council members and then other representatives.
So, it's, it's highly unlikely there'll be a problem.
Yeah, I would, I would say so.
Highly unlikely, okay.
Highly unlikely, but not guaranteed.
Oh, okay, so are we talking highly unlikely, 70/30, 80/20?
How about 90/10?
90/10?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember-
I think if there were a change, Liz would still have to come back to Nowland and make the changes and resubmit.
I, I don't think it would be a big holdup if there were something, it would be. With all the work that, that Liz has done following up with what Eric and the council has already told us, I, I don't see a problem. So, that being said, the motion is to not send Planner Stockman at this point. Understand the motion right?
Yes.
All right. So with that motion, all those in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for your willingness to do that, and I do believe your work will, will move right on through. I do have a question on the memo that you sent out with that regarding the zoning. And I would like to see us get a workshop together to finalize that.
Yes.
Because once the Met Council does approve this in March-
Right.
We will be getting phone calls.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman, Planner Stock-
Yes, that's why I was holding off to send it out to everyone, because we had, you know, with Ms. Strike and Mayor Pilon and the attorney and I, we sort of had our little subcommittee talking about this process. And we put a wonderful chart together comparing the existing district to the new district. And so, yeah, that needs to be put in ordinance form. As you can imagine, it will involve many sections of the city code. So, yes, that was the question, is how would you like to go about that? Presenting it to the whole council, number one, and then finalizing it.
I would recommend a, a workshop with the council.
Okay.
And show them the draft that we have come up with.
Okay.
Get their feedback at that point.
Okay.
And then, once we get it through workshop, then we can present it to the public.
Okay, perfect. What, when are you thinking?
When are you coming back in March?
March, May?
April.
I would come back, if I can get Eric to come back for the meeting.
Let's ask Lori to send out a availability email to the council and see if we can get together for work.
Yeah, I can be ready any time.
We've got, we've got Councilmember Blake, he's going to be out of the country here a little bit too, so.
We can also, you know, we don't have to rush right into the formal approval of a comp plan by the city council either, following the Met Council's approval, we could delay that until April. And we, you know, so that might not even, I could be optimistic too about the March 10th date for approval of that. So we, you know, we could realistically look at April and, you know.
Let's, let's take a look at, at where it's appropriate. So, because it's a, it's a, it's a big deal, and we don't want to rush it.
Right.
And we've got a couple of irons in the fire right now.
Right.
If, if we ever let Lori slow down enough to take a breath, we've got a few more things lined up here, so. So in addition to, we've got a legislative issue to deal with in the fire department, so.
Yes.
We're going to make sure we don't miss some other deadlines as well, so.
Okay, may I just ask a question?
Yes.
Upon the approval by Met Council, is everyone okay with, I mean, and your approval, the final approval? We're kind of hot to get some of those maps in there, you know, start using those updated maps. And to look at something here on the wall too, that is more presentable and useful to us. And we can get that printed, whether it be, you know, just an aerial photo with zoning on it? Or land use? Or you could have like four quadrants with various maps up there? So, just start thinking about that too.
Yeah, I was thinking when I was in the fire station sometime back here, and they've got this wonderful Ramsey map on the one side, and then we've got our, obviously we don't have as many features as Ramsey does, but it probably is time to update our maps.
Oh yeah, we could make it look very nice through Hawkinson's, you know, printers and everything. And put on there whatever you want. We can have all the streets with names, property lines, aerial photo underneath it if we want. So, a lot of options.
So let's, let's take a look at the options and, and pricing.
Okay.
And let's figure out what we can do.
Okay, sounds good.
It would be nice if we can do something to make it look intentional.
Yes. Yeah, that one's pretty old. Yeah, it does kind of need a frame, doesn't it?
It is used, I see people-
It is.
You know, it's interesting, we used to, every time there was something on P&amp;Z, every time there was a discussion, we would, generally the council members would go up and make sure we saw where it was in the map. And I do know when people are in here, they're looking at various things on the map, so it's, it's helpful.
It is.
You know, when we were at the threshing show, and we asked people to pin their homes on the map.
Oh, right.
It's amazing how many people have no idea where they are in the city.
They don't. They pin the whole, I've seen that too, just with, you know, when I play them.
We get to our address and help them pin it sometimes. But it is, it would be nice to have something that's, I know we, we cleared off these boards a couple of years ago, getting a lot of odd maps and things. But if, Lori, how do you want that handled? Do you want Liz to work with Hawkinson and get prices back to you, or?
Yeah, if you don't mind, Liz, I think you would have a better idea of what-
Sure.
Maps would be good for us. And, yeah, I think that would be good.
Sure, like maybe a size that would fit on there, and then one large one, maybe with the aerial photo underneath. So I'll just, yeah, talk to their administrative people and figure out the color map pricing. They probably have to do that, well, maybe four sections, you know. Not sure, I'll, I'll talk to them, because Oscego has a real impressive one up in their council chambers that Hawkinson did, so.
All right, so, I move that we authorize Planner Stockman to work with Hawkinson and get us options and prices.
Second.
Motion a second, any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, so now we get to the bonding. And the question I had on the bonding, Lori, is I got a little lost. Road improvements for 2020 are projected to be $800,000. So we lowered that from what we originally thought.
That's the three road improvement projects. It's just an average estimate of what it's going to come in at? Based off what Shane had submitted?
And depending on our soil boreings.
Correct, yeah. So it's, it's just a projected estimate right now.
And I know we were approximately at $40,000, I think we were $38,000 on the bonding fees last year.
Right, yeah.
And so we would be taking out two years of road improvement, so we would anticipate what 2021 would be and bond for both of those. And reimburse 2020. So can you walk me through how that works? So then you said you wanted then invest the existing funds. What would we, how many dollars would we be investing this year? And I would assume you're going to invest it for a year or two years or?
Well, Mayor and Council, we haven't gotten that far into it. This is just an idea coming from our consultant, Lori Jaeger, and myself in talking about bonding for the roads. And her proposal, as we discussed this, was rather than bonding this year and then bonding again in 2021, we would do a resolution in March stating that we are going to pay ourselves back in 2021 for the road improvement projects that would take place in 2020. And then we would bond in 2021 and immediately pay ourselves back. And then we would have the money for both years, but we would only pay for one bonding, which would be approximately $40,000, rather than paying $40,000 in 2020 and again in 2021. We have the funds available now to make payments if we need to. The payments wouldn't start coming in until the end of the year. And by 2021, the beginning of the year, we would already have the money coming back to pay ourselves back for that. The money that we would be investing would be, if we were going to do it that way, we would look at, all right, now how much money do we have that we can start investing with and how long do we need to invest so that we can get the best benefit from that? Some, we might do some long-term investing. We might do, you know, long-term as in three years, or we might do six months and one year and, you know, 18 months. It's just going to depend on if, if we get a go-ahead on this, we'll start investigating into what we'll be investing.
Yeah, I know what you're talking about. If we took the money we had originally projected, a million and a quarter, invested it for a year, right now there's a number of places at 2%. You get $25,000 in interest there or something. So yeah, if we can do that, so. So the question is to the council, do we want to bond for year 2020 and 2021? Using the cash on hand to cover anything that was necessary in the interim? Reimburse that money when the funds become available next year? And then take the excess funds, the excess cash we have, and appropriately invest it at the highest rate possible? Right now, bonds are still at an extremely low rate. Since we bonded for our roads last year, we've gone down three times. It's very competitive because of the situation with the Fed. There's a lot of people looking to reinvest. And so neighboring communities are getting nine to 11 investors competing for the bonds, where typically they'll see two or three. So it's, it's a good market for that. Question is, do we want to direct staff, according to this memo, to look at two years' worth of bonding and investing cash appropriately? To make sure we're covered going forward? And understanding that we can have some potential expenses, depending on what our decision is with the fire department.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryant.
Well, at least according to, you know, what we've preliminary planned for next year, we are looking at probably at least a million dollars for a road project.
Yeah, we're looking at Rogers Lake, we're probably looking at potentially even twice that.
If not more now, but you know, that, that's, that's a project that's going to, that certainly, it's not a small project.
Right. But we would take that into account in the bonding.
Right, I'm just looking at it as from a, from a cost savings. It sounds to me like this would be a inefficient, sorry, I said it wrong, an inefficient way to save some of the bonding costs. Knowing that, you know, that's quite a lot, we'll have a larger amount of projects this year and next.
Yeah, and that is, if we can save approximately $40,000 just to the bonding cost and we can get an interest rate similar to what other municipalities are getting right now, it's a win-win.
So I'm knowing that the roads, that it's not going to get any cheaper and we don't know what's under there either.
Right. Yeah, the, like I say, on the short term, you know, if we, you know, some of the bond rates right now are well under two, some of them at 1.2. And the investment interest, though it's only for a year to, actually a year is the best rate right now, but that's 2%. You're actually investing it aggressively. And it's one of the, one of the ways, you can't legally reinvest the bond money and make money on it. But you can take your cash invested and make interest on it. So it's, it's a good way of, of investing our money and keeping our, our bond rating where it is as well, so.
The one thing to keep in mind is that we did allocate some of those funds to be working on Rogers Lake already.
Yeah, and I think that's why they're looking at short-term, long, midterm and long-term investments.
Because I would think this summer, we're going to find out more about what's under there, so.
All right, so is there an understanding of the request here?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryant.
So if I may say it again, so we're looking at taking, not bonding this year and then bonding again next year, but getting one bond for 2020 and 20, an estimate for 2021. And then using that to, for our road projects. And then we can turn around and take the money that we would have spent on road projects this year. And whatever we're not spending on actual road projects and repairs would be invested that we can use and then pay ourselves back towards the bond next year.
From the cash on hand, yes.
From the cash on hand.
Yes, not the bond money, but yes.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Greenberg.
To a degree, will we be making an educated guess on the Rogers Lake size?
Yes, we will. We'll make an engineering guess.
She may make that guess.
Well, with some of the concerns shared by Dan is, which I agree with, you know, some of those things we may not know. Do we throw an extra 10 grand in there for contingency?
Typically, the engineer will take a look at the scope of the project and what he knows of the existing roads and put a contingency in there, in the estimate.
It would be on a larger scale than what we did this year on Krypton and Dolomite and Ebony and Garnett, making those repairs.
Yeah, and if we do, do those this year, we can have the same thing where they ride through winter and see what happens, so. Any other? If not, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryant.
Make a motion to proceed with the plan presented by our clerk treasurer and Lori Jaeger for bonding for our road projects for 2020 and 2021.
Second, sir.
Motion is second, any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adjourn.
We are adjourned.